Are you ready?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Go ahead and call this meeting the November 24th meeting of the Salisbury City Council to order. Good evening and welcome to what we have is a pretty large crowd. I'll go ahead and say in advance, we do have some requests for comment on one of our, on our ordinance tonight. We also have, I'm sure, some additional commenters. If you do have a comment to make, please make sure that you get one of these little nifty forms over here on this table, fill that out. And I'll also just ask that everyone remember that we do have a time limit on our remarks of three minutes. As long as that list doesn't grow too long, we'll keep it at that this evening. And we will be watching the clock just so that we're not here all night long. City council and staff are aware that we had a meeting that went until 10:30 a few nights ago, or a week ago. So with that, we have some wonderful community organizations with us this evening, but first and foremost, we have Reverend James Riley with us this evening, pastor at Nelson Memorial United Methodist Church. Reverend, if you wouldn't mind joining us and leading us in the city invocation.
Thank you very much. I like that response. People stand when I come to the photo.
They don't do it for me.
Is this on TV or something? Can I tell my folks to watch this and take notes?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
You may be seated, please. First, let me say thank you for inviting me. I received the invitation and thought, well, this is kind of weird, and I'm not a Salisbury resident. You know, I live in Hebron, not Salisbury. And on a little deeper reflection, I must say that I truly appreciate being a part of this because Hebron being just a couple miles out of Salisbury, like all the other little towns surrounding Salisbury, we work here in Salisbury, we sleep in Hebron, but we eat in Salisbury and we play in Salisbury and pretty much do everything except sleep. And thank you for including us in this process and for valuing the role of faith and divine guidance in the process. Let us pray. Almighty and all-knowing God of us all, thank you for the men and women of this council who give their time and their energy to discuss and decide the important issues facing Salisbury. I thank you for their willingness to receive your wisdom and your guidance in the process. And I pray specifically that tonight you would pour out your wisdom upon them, that you would give them the gift of discernment and of knowledge as they ponder and as they decide the things that will affect all of us in and around Salisbury. So guide the process, the discussion, the remarks, and the decisions. We ask in your holy and mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you all so much. Next, I'll invite the mayor to the podium. And do you want to invite up Zoo Director Ralph Pyleman?
Good evening, council. We have a special presentation tonight that I will call up our Zoo Director Ralph Pyleman, who will introduce to us our representatives from the American Zoological Association for the award that they are here to bestow. I will, because Ralph will not do this, just ask all of you to keep in your prayers the 22-year-old panther that died. It's a panther?
Jaguar.
Jaguar panther. It was dark. It was, it was melanistic. I read that today. That's a word that I did not know that allows the jaguar to be of the dark color. So if you will, 22 years, the animal graced the Salisbury Zoo, so if you can remember the zoo and that animal in your prayers this evening, that'd be great. So Ralph, if you'll come forward, introduce our guest and begin to make the presentation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council President, members of the Salisbury City Council, guests, colleagues. Thank you for taking time to share with us. Frequently at the start of these meetings, the mayor's office and the city council take time to recognize the contributions and accomplishments of various civic and community organizations. But tonight, we wanted to shift that focus just a little bit. It's important for us to recognize that any accomplishment made at the Salisbury Zoo is made possible by the guidance and support of the Office of Mayor Arton, of the Salisbury City Council, the contribution of the various departments within the city of Salisbury, and in particular, our Department of Public Works, and yet ultimately also by all the citizens of the city of Salisbury. And so tonight, we're very pleased to have with us Mr. Jim Matty, who's the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. And he will present, not to the zoo, but to the city of Salisbury, a plaque recognizing the continued professional accreditation of the Salisbury Zoo. Jim?
So this is a great achievement. Accreditation of a zoological institution, a collection of living objects, is a very serious business. We're in the life and death business at the zoo, if you will. And there is only one accreditation standard for zoological institutions in North America, and that is accreditation by my organization, the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. There are 228 zoos and aquariums in the United States, Mexico, and the Caribbean that meet this standard. There are 10 times that number of institutions that are displaying animals for the enjoyment of the public licensed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, but who do not meet these accreditation standards. So there's one accreditation standard, you meet it. It's the same one that's met by the San Diego Zoo, the world famous Bronx Zoo, the St. Louis Zoo, the Smithsonian National Zoo. When it comes to animal care, when it comes to veterinary care, nutrition, housing, education programs, conservation programs, and modern zoological practice, you can be small, you can go big, but there's, but there is this one common standard of animal care, and that's the standard that you've met. Why does that make a difference? It makes you a better employer, it makes you a better partner, and you cannot be involved in wildlife conservation without really extensive, meaningful, deep partnerships with fellow zoos and fellow aquariums and wildlife agencies at the federal, state, and local level and other players in that field. So accreditation says, we're a science-driven organization, we're professional, we're serious about what we're doing, we know how and do provide the highest standards of animal care and welfare, but we go beyond that and we demonstrate to our visitors how to be involved in wildlife conservation, and we offer, and this is one I really want to hammer home here this evening for just a second, you offer, I know because you're an accredited zoo, you have the plans, the budgets, the staffing, and the facilities to offer a meaningful educational experience to every child that comes through there, every teacher, every parent, everyone who comes through there. You're seeing about a little over 300,000 visitors this year, I believe. That's an awful lot of people to offer a meaningful educational experience to, and I don't kid myself for a minute that every one of your visitors is looking for a meaningful educational experience. Most of them are looking for an enjoyable experience, an enriching experience for their family, for their church group, their school group, whatever the case might be. But I do, I don't want to leave town without reminding everyone in this room, and certainly everyone on the council and the mayor and the city administration, that that commitment to conservation and that commitment to public education is really what sets you apart from several hundred other organizations that probably do a pretty good job in their animal care, might not quite meet all of our standards, but maybe do a pretty good job. But it's that commitment to the community, to public education, and to engaging the community massively in wildlife conservation at a time, unfortunately, around the world when habitat is not improving, when conditions for wildlife are actually not on a positive and favorable trend, in a world in which there are lots of species and taxa that are facing extinction, but for the work of these accredited zoos and aquariums. I'm really here to congratulate you for that. The final thing I want to say is the animal health facility you've built, that animal hospital, that your zoo, right here in Salisbury, is a jewel. That's as nice a facility as I've seen anywhere in the country, and I've seen a lot of them just this year, and you can imagine how many I've seen in years prior to that. So the commitment that the city made, that your office made, that you followed through on, the work that the City Public Works Agency performed in making sure that that got done right and on budget and on time, truly, truly outstanding performance. And my expectation would be that'll energize the community, that'll boost your confidence, you'll raise your sights, and over the next 10 years, you'll build an even better zoological and cultural attraction right here. My guess is you're already one of the biggest draws in the county in terms of tourism and economic impact. One of the things our association does is we help you measure that, we help you model that and forecast economic impact. So if that's ever something that you want Ralph and his staff to give you additional help on, they can work with us and we can generate good, solid numbers on that score. But with 300,000 visitors and a community of this size, a budget of that size, you know you're having that positive economic impact. And it's not unusual for a zoo to be a real driver in the regional tourism economy and in the local, local employment specter as well. So my congratulations to all of you.
Let me read it for you.
Let me read this if I could, and you know, we see a few folks.
Can you get the microphone a little closer to?
We can see a few folks in the audience that have their zoo shirts and jackets on, and so those are the folks who actually literally got their hands dirty earning this accreditation plaque, so our congratulation goes to them as well, of course.
They could stand up when you do this, maybe.
Yeah, in fact, what I'd love, what I'd love to do is, as you read that, can we have the Public Works and Zoo employees who are here with us tonight come join you? Mr. Mayor up there?
We're going to actually, what we'll do is we'll have you read it, and then we're going to get a big picture.
Perfect.
With the council and everybody, so go ahead and do this.
So I'm here to announce officially that the Association of Zoos and Aquariums honors the Salisbury Zoological Park, having satisfied the qualitative evaluation and professional standards of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums Accreditation Commission. You're hereby granted accreditation, and this is good through now through September 30, 2019. It's signed by Dr. Jackie Ogden, who's the Chief of Zoological Affairs at the Great Walt Disney Company, and by Jim Anderson, who chairs the Accreditation Commission and runs the Children's Zoo in Fort Wayne, Indiana. So you earned it, this proves it, and congratulations very much.
As we set up for the picture, if you will walk around, let's just also remember all of our partners at the zoo, including the Zoo Commission, including the Friends of the Salisbury Zoo, including the Delmarva Zoological Society, all those people, and those incredible people who work for us and our Public Works Department leaders that get us through this every day.
Come on, Ron.
You got a wide, wide angle.
That's everyone. Here's your count on three. One.
Cheetah.
Mr. Council President, if, while we are settling, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Delegate Elect Chris Adams, who has joined us today, who represents parts of Salisbury. We want to welcome him, and we look forward to the partnership of working with him. And also, and she will not like this, but I would also like to recognize the council president's wife, who has joined us this evening, who has come off an incredible week for teachers during American Education Week and does an incredible job teaching at Pittsfield Elementary and Middle School, and we just want to take the opportunity to welcome her to chambers this evening, Mr. Council President. Not that, I'm sure you know she's here.
I think both my wife and Delegate Adams are thoroughly embarrassed. They're both blushing. They're both blushing.
Welcome to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the zoo staff, Zoo Commission members, and Mr. Ratty. I don't know if he makes it to all 228 of those zoos as they get accredited, but he came to ours, and that's pretty great. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the adoption of the legislative agenda. I will entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
I'd like to move ordinance number 2306 after the consent agenda, please.
Okay.
I have to treat another engagement, and I apologize to Ms. Miller, but I have another engagement that I have to do. So if you don't mind, I'll put that after the consent agenda.
Looks like she'll forgive you.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Sure, let's jump right on it. I'll second that, okay.
Mr. Stevens, thank you very much. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, all those in favor of the legislative agenda as amended, please.
I have a question before we do that.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
We were again handed a document with changes that were made very late in the day, not submitted in time for the package. It's not redlined, I don't know what the changes are, and it's several pages. I'd like to ask Chief Hoppus how time-sensitive this is, because I really don't like being put in a position.
Which one is it?
The fire department.
And where did it come from?
From the attorney's office at 410 this afternoon. And we were just given it that, given this at the table, and I really am not comfortable voting on things that I haven't had a chance to read and review. I'm tired of it.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Chief Hoppus, anything you'd like to add for our edification?
We were also given these changes this afternoon, so.
I understand that.
We, we would appreciate the opportunity for the city attorney to go through them, but if that's not the will of the council, we can wait and do it next time.
Chief?
It is, unfortunately, it is time-sensitive, and we would, we would love to have it heard tonight because it keeps the project on task and on schedule. What, what was presented to you tonight represents changes that a third party, the other individuals that, not of the city's control, that Mr. Tillman had to take time to review, and we did that just as expeditiously as possible. Mr. Tillman can answer about the timeliness of the submission, et cetera, et cetera, but it is time-sensitive, but ultimately, council gets to make that decision.
Mr. Stevens, did you have something?
Ordinarily, I would say yes and agree with Ms. Mitchell, but I would really like to hear what the substance of the changes is before I make a determination as to what my vote will be.
Oh, and I would agree with that. We have an opportunity to hear what those changes are at the time we discuss it, and we can table it if we need to.
That's fine.
Ms. Mitchell, I agree with you regarding, you know, getting things at the table late in the game. Are you okay?
Especially not a red line of a version where we can readily see what's.
I agree, I agree. Are you okay with us hearing it tonight? And Mr. Tillman has agreed to provide a detailed explanation of what changes came in at the last minute.
We'll make that, that's fine. We'll make the determination when we read it.
Understood.
Thank you for accommodating.
Thank you.
Counsel? Okay, all right. With that, thank you, chief. With that, I'll entertain, excuse me, with that, all those in favor of the legislative agenda as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right. Ms. Nichols? Already a step ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have November 3, 2014 work session minutes, the November 3, 2014 closed session minutes, the November 10 regular meeting minutes, Resolution 2462 authorizing Delmarva Collections to collect delinquent accounts, and Resolution Number 2463 accepting Oxbury Property Company LLC's contribution to the streetscape improvements to Fitzwater Street corridor. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and just want to acknowledge and thank Oxbury Property Company for contributing to a public project, private company contributing to a public project for streetscape improvements in that corridor. I think we're going to see a lot of great beautification in that area very near, in the very near future. All right, next on the agenda is ordinance number 2306 for second reading. This is the stormwater utility fee ordinance. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2306.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman?
All right, the last reading, I did my speed reading version of the introductory language of this ordinance, but in short, the, this is the ordinance to establish the fees and the, and the right of the city of Salisbury to assess those fees based on the stormwater, you know, controlling the quality and the amount of stormwater that's generated. If you have any specific requirements about the details, obviously, they need to be answered by the Department of Public Works. If you have any questions about the ordinance, I'll be happy to try and answer them with the assistance of Public Works. If you would like, I will read.
No, I don't think you need to read it at this point. We've been working on this for over a year. At this point, though, I would like to bring members of the public who have requested to speak forward. First, I have is Ms. Gibson.
Kaye Gibson, resident of Salisbury. I hope you're all planning on voting no. We don't need another tax or fee in the city of Salisbury. We are already paying for this service through our property tax. We don't need you all putting our, your hands in our pocket. I think the November 4 election was a message to all tax-and-spend politicians. As my grandpa would say, you all got your ass kicked. We can do it again, and we will do it again. Bottom line is you need to look at the neighborhoods in Salisbury. You need to go through them. You need to know how many houses are not selling, how many houses are vacant, how many houses are becoming derelict. It's happening because you all constantly are increasing taxes. People don't want to be taxed twice for the same service. They don't want to move in here and pay $100 or $200 a month more for taxes and a house payment than if they live in the county. You're hurting us, you're hurting our property values with these kind of behaviors. We can't sell our homes, we can't get out from under, and I'm really very disappointed in many members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next, I have Mr. Drew.
Hi, good evening. Matt Drew, 301 North Claremont Drive, Salisbury, Maryland. Thanks for the opportunity. Three minutes, I'll keep it to three minutes. First off, I appreciate the work that this body has done, as well as the folks at Public Works to take a serious look at this. The last time we did a major look at this, in my mind, there were some, some pretty serious gaps in terms of the way that this proposed ordinance was going to be fairly implemented, and I think this revised ordinance goes a long way toward improving the overall fairness. Particularly, one of the concerns that I had is that there wasn't any distinction made between properties that had existing stormwater management systems on the property themselves versus properties that didn't do anything to properly manage stormwater. There's certainly some improvements in the language that go to address that inequity. One thing I would say is I would love to see some examples be developed to show particularly commercial property owners how this ordinance might affect them. In particular, I picked two as a possible example, and I'm a customer of both, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to, they're both businesses I like doing business with, but I'd love to see a comparison of Giant Foods versus the CVS at the corner of South Salisbury Boulevard and College Avenue. The reason I picked those two as an example is that one has an existing legacy system that dates probably back to the 1950s, if I had to estimate, in terms of its management of stormwater. So it does a great job of preventing the property from flooding, but it doesn't do anything to mitigate nutrient quality coming off the property compared, so that would be the Giant Foods property. Compare that to the CVS, a very recent development meets the requirements, the latest 2009 version of the MDE requirements, where stormwater quantity, so flooding, and quality, so nutrition and pollutants, both of those are controlled on that property, and I'd just love to see a comparison of what, what is the impact of one property versus another in terms of the utility fees that they could expect to pay under this policy. Couple of details I'd love to see improved. There's no credit given for disconnection of roof leaders, sheet flow to conservation areas, or rain barrels in this proposed policy. I think those are good practices, and I think property owners should be able to get credit for those. One thing I'd really love to see some clarification on is how will this fee be determined? In my mind, if there's a projection of what the capital needs of the city are going to be to improve stormwater versus the number of users or, and the way that they would pay into those, you would simply divide one into the other, and that becomes the fee. I'd love to see some explanation in terms, so that's my version of how I think it should work, but, but there's no clarif, there should be a clarification of what the method is for determining what the fee is going to be. I'd love to see at least some discussion in terms of what the expectations are of the city staff within the Public Works Department to enact this ordinance. As I think through the applications that are going to happen for waivers or credits to this, and I, as an engineer in the community, I get to work with these great folks every day, and I know they do a good job, and that they are always being asked to do more and more and more, and this is going to be yet another more that they're being asked to do. So, so I'd love to hear what, from a staffing standpoint, the plan is. And then the last thing is just a basic legal question that I have that I'd love to see clarified, is that if, if a fee is charged for this, and this is called a utility, is there also an implication that a service is going to be provided for that utility? And what my real concern is that if the city charges a fee for a stormwater utility and a particular property has a problem with stormwater management, and heaven forbid that they become flooded and there's property damage, does that then implicate the city as being responsible because they, they charged a fee for a service and yet the service wasn't provided? So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Thank you, Mr. Drew. Next I have Dr. Stripling.
Good evening. I'm Judith Stripling. I live at 3984 Texas Road in Byvalve. I'm not a city resident, but as Reverend Riley said, we all spend our lives in Salisbury. And I have been a part of the river project for a number of years. I also advise the Wycomica Creek Watchers and supervise the science part of that program. I don't speak for Creek Watchers because they're not an advocacy group by any means, but I would just like to remind you that our recent report for the Wycomica Creek Watchers for 2013 illustrated the dramatic effect of stormwater on the Wycomica River water quality. So in three years of very low rainfall, we had seen modest improvement over the course of time, and in 2013, that improvement was quite dramatically reversed. It wasn't as bad as it, you know, might have been. We see some of our efforts paying off, but we definitely see a link between stormwater and water quality right in our own river. Wycomica River used to be the number one bass fishing river on the bay. I think it was a major destination at any rate, a very important recreational water body, and water quality has declined to the point where that is not, is no longer the case. I salute the city and Mayor Irtan for the efforts to make it fishable and swimmable, and I think this goes a long way towards doing that. I understand there are issues that need to be addressed with implementation, and I don't have the expertise to advise you on that, but I commend you for taking this on as a service to the city, the citizens of the city of Salisbury. This will increase their property values. It will increase their quality of life, and it will increase the quality of water in the Wycomica River. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Hensler?
Evening. Hi. My name's Mick Hensler, 408 Camden Avenue, Salisbury. Off and on, lifelong resident. It's interesting, I just spent an hour right before coming here checking my boat down at the Cedar Hill Marina, and had a chance to talk with the doctor's husband for about an hour. Interesting. Just happenstance. I would like to, if I could just put a rubber stamp on what Mr. Drew said, he hit about all of my, all of my technical talking points that I was going to say tonight, so I won't, I won't reiterate that. But what I do want to say is, as a, as a lifelong resident, I do remember when the Wycomica was a clean, or somewhat clean, river. And I've seen it go downhill ever since then. In a recent poll done by Outside Magazine of the top 100 destination cities and towns in the United States, they all had one thing in common, and I think it's a very, very crucial thing that Salisbury is looking at. I would like to see more. And that is, the one thing that these destination places had where people want to live, they all had water. And most of the top 10 and top 20 communities had done drastic things to improve the quality of their waterways, including access, swimability, fishability, just making it a more cleaner, safer environment. And I think that's something that Salisbury is really starting to take a hard look at. And this is, this particular, what are we calling it, an ordinance? Okay. I think goes a long way to send a message to surrounding communities that Salisbury takes this as the largest municipality on the eastern shore, takes their contribution to the pollution of our rivers and our bays very seriously, and I think it is something well worth. And if the fees are what you say they are going to be, take my money. That's all I got to say. I am in 100% support of this. So, and I'm also a small business owner, so I understand the implications to businesses as well. Businesses that I've talked to don't understand this, so that's about the only thing that I would, I would say, and kind of piggyback on what Mr. Drew said, is to, is to reach out to the business community and really, really get their input on this, and work with them as to what they can expect from fees from this. Because, you know, a place like Giant, that could be, that could be a deal breaker for them to, you know, come to this town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensler. Thank you. Next I have Mr. Fisher.
Eric Fisher with Chesapeake Bay Foundation. One-time proud office resident of Salisbury. We're in Easton now to be in service to the shore as a whole, but it's great to be back tonight. My family is another frequent participant in the Salisbury community, and it's wonderful to be here. Wanted to say two things. First, to applaud the city council, the mayor, and the city as a whole for getting to this point. President Day mentioned that it's been over a year that the ordinance has been on the table. I would say that it's been five years that this discussion has been going forward, going all the way back to an environmental task force of community citizens and residents in 2009 that first made the recommendation to move forward with something like this. This is really an initiative that is coming from the community, and it's recommending a proposal, a program, that will stay in the community and allow the community to control its own destiny when it comes to stormwater and controlling polluted runoff. So, you know, these, these folks, when they sat down in this committee, they saw the flooding in the community. They saw the trash, the toxic chemicals, all that stuff that gets brought up in flooding situations. They saw the erosion. My goodness, we're having to save parking lots from the river because of polluted runoff at this point. And they know that we can't swim in the ponds anymore, which is something that we used to do. That's why we're here. That's why we're talking about this. And so I would encourage the city council to go ahead and take this next step. It is a very responsible step to take. I think it's a very timely step. I wanted to note that far from government largess, this is action. This is a project list. We know what's going to be funded by this money. We know which neighborhoods. We know which problem areas in terms of polluted runoff we can address. We know how to address them. That project list is prioritized by cost effectiveness. So the biggest bang for the buck is right there at the top. This is a very responsible approach that the council's taken. We applaud you for that. We also believe that the approach you're taking, the two-step process to get the ordinance in place and then deal with the fees, allows for the various kinds of discussion that I think some folks would like to have. So with your adoption of this ordinance, I think it will put the council in a very good position to have those conversations with some basic expectations in place. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for your action, and we ask for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Wanted to offer you and your staff an opportunity to speak to the proposed ordinance.
We did receive Mr. Drew's questions on Friday and worked over the weekend to have answers. I think you all have the questions. He did email them to you, and staff did work over the weekend with answers to them. And if it is the will of the council, both Mr. Molds and Ms. Pollock are here to, to discuss the answers to those questions that they worked on over the weekend, if that's your pleasure.
Absolutely.
As the mayor mentioned, I appreciate Matt getting us the questions so we could come over. One of the first ones was the idea of how to allow for the credits on the systems. One of the initial things when we redid the ordinance was we put together the worksheets, drafted those in terms of how, I don't know if you had gotten those, Matt. They were from an early workshop that had been done. One of the important things in terms of this whole discussion was, when we first did the initial ordinance, it was based on the city town of Berlin. And with the desire to pull into the whole idea of the credit program, it helps you if you don't have to reinvent the wheel, per se. So what we utilized was the city of Rockville as far as the basis for developing their credit program. Rockville has had a stormwater utility in place since 2009. It's a similar city to Salisbury, population of 60,000. It's under the same regulatory constraints as the city with a MS4 permit for stormwater, as well as the Chesapeake Bay drainage area. So it was a good way of looking into that and how to develop those type of programs in terms of dealing with the credits and stuff like that. So there's a good website they've got on that. And Matt, if you are interested, we do have, they were draft worksheets that helped to figure out how those credits are calculated. Obviously, in terms of the different examples that are there, one of the charges we had when we went back to relook at the ordinance was we got support from the council to start working with Salisbury University in calculating the impervious areas that would go into the calculation of what the fee is. We've been working with them. I'd say they're within 90, 95% complete of that. We're going through our quality control on that. But that information will be available to start working through those calculations and seeing how that data, GIS data, Geographic Information System, and aerial data to do the calculations on that. There was, you did have a comment too about the wanting to include what we call non-structural type credits into the system. The city of Rockville, going back to them, did not include those type of facilities. They are not eligible for credit because they don't typically have a structural maintenance burden. One of the interesting aspects of having the credit program is there has to be a renewal, because one of the important parts of having stormwater facilities is that they are properly maintained. It's not a thing where you put it in the ground and boop, you don't have to worry about it anymore. It requires to get recertified for that credit to show that those facilities are being maintained. So it was an important part of the credit system and those type of structural facilities. I would mention that the type of non-structural type facilities, for example, rain gardens, we will have a grant program that will be a one-time type grant that could be provided for homeowners to put those type of things in and offset those kind of costs.
Mr. Molds, can I interrupt just to ask a question about that? Could our grant program be used to purchase something that is non-structural, like a rain barrel?
Yes. That's what I mean. In term, instead of credit...
Not just the rain gardens you mentioned, but...
Well, rain gardens, rain barrels, the rain barrels is what I was referring to, in terms of being able to do that for homeowners. Because remember, we will have a minimum fee of one ERU.
I get, right. So, and the other question I had is, couldn't, I mean, it would make sense to me if there was a similar credit given, if the impact was similar, for something that was non-structural. If, instead of maintenance, couldn't we use that it was still there, presence rather than maintenance, as the standard to be measured year on year if we're trying to determine, is that utility, is that piece of the utility on their property still being maintained?
Well, it'll, one of the requirements, anybody that puts a stormwater facility in is they have to have a stormwater management agreement that has their responsibility for cleaning it or keeping it maintained. Typically, these type of non-structural things, keeping it mowed, keeping grass, turning into weeds and things like that. And that's going to be a requirement of the property owner, and we have to also demonstrate to the state that we are inspecting those facilities every two, three years, and we can follow through on that.
Okay.
So there, there in the provisions, and that was worksheets that I talked about, and again, this is the wording that was used in Rockville, that a stormwater facility receives only aesthetic maintenance from the owners, not eligible for credit.
Understood.
Okay. Let's see where we were at. The ERU fee, again, I think we're using the worksheets will help with that. And as we have the data available with the impervious area calculations, that'll give a better idea how those calculations are done. The credit applies to a discount of the impervious area. So in other words, if you've got X number and you get a percent credit that comes off that area, and you calculate the result times whatever the fee is per square foot.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Spies, you had a question? Will this opportunity be available over time? You said there was a specific timeframe for the grant. I see this as, you know, should this be enacted, as an opportunity for learning how to mitigate stormwater on a specific property. So is there a reward for people doing that down the road?
Absolutely. One of the biggest challenges we will have as a city in terms of meeting our water quality goals is to get the private property owners involved in cleaning up stormwater. And through the grant program, through the opportunities for credits, as through retrofitting those type of facilities, someone could do that and be eligible for those types of offsets.
And these will be available long-term?
Absolutely. It'll be continuous.
Thank you. That's most of my question.
Okay. Staffing, if you remember some of our earlier discussions, when the Maryland Finance Institute had done their calculations, I was concerned because they were, they were staffing estimates that were creating a whole new department. And one of the recommendations that came from Public Works is, because of the background that Matt and I both have in stormwater, we felt we would be better off trying to manage the stormwater utility within our department, because as you know, we already handle two enterprise funds, the water and wastewater funds, as well as the marina for that matter, and focus a lot of the funding on shoveling the ground stuff. It will utilize, we would have a consultant do designs of a particular project and construct that, rather than just having a lot of staff. So it was a goal to try to do that to maximize what kind of output we can do. Let's see if I've got any other thing here. Making some notes while you're up there, Matt. I'm going to turn over the legal to Mark, if you wanted to answer that one.
Legal implications, taxverse fee, and then service, a service provision, and there being an expectation.
Yeah. No contractual relationship would be set by charging a fee in order to improve the stormwater management system. To the extent that the city negligently designed its stormwater system, you know, to flood someone else's property, our liability would be no different under this law than it currently is. And any negligence, you know, would obviously be covered by the city's insurance carriers. So it, you know, the whole thing is designed to improve the system, not make it worse. So, you know, I can't imagine that it would make any significant difference whatsoever.
Is this the, the issue of the 100-year flood, 200-year flood, or say, the 300-year flood that we had during the past hurricane? I'm wondering if that's, if that's where this question comes from?
Well, I think it comes from a reasonable assumption that there are going to be, there are going to be floods to come. And what liability does the city bear after having introduced a fee to address stormwater and flooding? And I would say that, you know, to Mr. Drew and anyone else wondering, that this essentially is a, not a legal contract, but a contract that we're going to work on. I mean, before now, the political winds can blow the funding one way or the other. And where it hasn't blown it is into the stormwater system. And you've had infrastructure there since 1910 that nobody's been maintaining at the level that we should have been. And that's because it hasn't had a dedicated fund.
Yeah. I think if we, if we took the fees, if we implemented this, collected the fees, and did nothing that was on the list, then I think that argument might be valid. But where it falls on the list and the argument that we did this priority based on our list, and another property further down the list got flooded instead, well, you know, we're trying to get to it. I think that it's going to take time. It took us time to get here. It's going to take time to get it all corrected. I think the only way I could see is if we did nothing with, with the money.
Yep. Mr. Molds, did you have anything else?
The only other thing was...
Or Mr. Tillman?
The comment in terms of how we come up with the fee and weigh that with the number of projects. The way we see it is the way the council currently does their projects in terms of their CIP. Typically, with these type of public works projects, they go over several years in terms of the efforts to get the design permitting through the state in order to do those kind of things. So what we would see is, you know, looking at what kind of income you get through the utility, how that matches up with projects that ranked by the Department of Public Works and how you want to proceed doing them and nip away at them.
I think the only part that might not be satisfactory to people about that is that, you know, there will be a fee collected, and it will be some time, perhaps years before you see, you know, or two years before you see a project implemented that begins to address flooding issues. So if there's flooding in the interim, you know, I could see some frustration. So if there's flooding in the interim, you know, I could see some frustration.
Yeah, again, what, what was mentioned is you look at it from a cost-effective approach. You want to go get the best bang for your buck. Those projects may be more far-reaching in terms of meeting the needs of a lot of people versus more centralized type projects. Those are things you have to weigh in terms of doing it. The other thing too, to keep in mind is what we talked about with this fee is this fee is used as leverage for getting grant money. So this is money that we want to hopefully double down. Because any projects you go into now, because not only the city of Salisbury, but a lot of our municipalities in Maryland are going to be competing for this grant money. And it looks a lot better anytime you submit grant money if there's a local share that can be contributed rather than just going up with your handout for a hundred percent.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
We did address the issue of employees or building a department of more people. Did we do that?
You did.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moulds. Okay. Counsel comment?
May I?
Yes, Ms. Shields.
I'm listening to all of this and I've received a call, I've received emails in support of this fee. I know we have EPA and MDA requirements that was different maybe fifty years ago. This has weighed real hard for me. It's been real, real hard for me because I look at other citizens in our community that are on fixed incomes and they may not understand what you're trying to do. They see a flush tax already on their property bill or a, a, something on the water bill. What is that on the water bill?
Flush tax.
Flush tax on the water bill, flush tax on their tax bill too. Stormwater bill, something by the bill that's stormwater. So when you go and try to convince people why you need this fee, it's a hard sell. Five dollars a quarter can buy a meal for someone. They, people on social security, they're, if they get a raise, whatever the raise is, their Medicare goes up. Or if they're living subsidized housing, the rent goes up. However, I look at, in saying this, I look at the pipes that came up out of Parsons Road. Because I never really seen like pipes like that. They were rusted, aging. And I can't forget and cannot forget Germania Circle, which is in the community I live in. It's flooded for, I'm sixty-five, for I know over sixty years it's been flooded. One lady homeowner has since passed away and we have kept promising them that we'd fix it and it has not been fixed. And I look at Delaware Avenue just last year, the flooding in Cody Cox and all the trash and debris that came out of that situation. And Public Works did a Band-Aid fix and we're supposed to be working on that, correct? Okay, good. Also, I remember some homeowner that lived on the corner of Camden and Tow Street. We had a flooding issue. I think to the point where they couldn't sell their house or they wanted to move or something. I can't remember that far back, but I knew it was a concern about the flooding. And these are just a few of the situations around our community. And I know when I came on council in two thousand and five, one of the previous public works directors did a twenty-year study, got a twenty thousand dollar grant to do flooding, a flood study in the whole community of Salisbury. And I was surprised to see some of the communities that were, or neighborhoods that were in a flood zone, a flood plain. So this is a serious issue. And as I said before, we need to educate the folks on why we need this. We may need to have PowerPoints to show the pipes that have come out underneath the system. We may need to show the trash after a storm that has, that's laying in the drains. And that would be part of my PowerPoint presentation. If, and you go to the senior, the senior centers have community centers. They, and they would be more interested, I think, than some of our younger folks. But some of the seniors would appreciate that. They, all of them have community rooms that you could do a presentation so they could better understand the fee because they're going to be charged the fee even though they may rent or own their condominiums or whatever. I think we need to educate our people on this fee. Because just me saying, well, we need it because we need stormwater, they don't, they don't, like pictures do a, say a million words. We need to actually show them the trash that goes in the river, show them the pipes that's coming out of a river, show them the water mains that have collapsed. We need to do that. And this idea just came to my head. Show them, show me that, you know, I'm from Missouri, show me. So that's what you need to do for the community. Explain to them why we need this. I will support this ordinance this evening. Like, but like I said, it was just, I told gentlemen, I talked to today, it just was, you know, I try to see both sides of the coin. But the, the good outweighs that. And I think proper education will, will, will overcome. That's it.
Thank you, Michelle. May I tell Mr. Spees?
May I?
Yes.
I've looked at this for years. Over the past forty years, the population of Salisbury has doubled. The motor traffic that comes through Salisbury is five hundred percent of what it was forty years ago. We are responsible for every bit of the pollutants that hits our ground. This isn't a water tax. This isn't a water fee. This is about what is washed into our waterways and filters down into our drinking water. The water that we drink every day, that we bathe in, that we wash our children in, that we make soda pop with, that we brew beer with. This is an economic, an economic imperative for us. And I think for us to get on board with it and be one of the few, few times at Salisbury, as the first out of the starting gate, says something about who we are, what we care about, and where we want to go. I, my vote will be a resounding yes. But I want to be sure that everyone knows that whatever money comes to this fund is totally inexorably dedicated to stormwater and stormwater runoff. Doesn't go to any other fund, doesn't fill in any blanks that any other fund can't fund, and doesn't go into the general fund. This is a dedicated fund specifically for our stormwater runoff. And to mitigate, not the water itself, folks, but what is contained in the water, which is all the pollutants that we generate and the people that come through town generate. But they are our guests and we are responsible for our guests. So please join with me and nod yes to this, to this whole thing. We've, we've worked hard with this and I think that we're going to stand out in the state of Maryland. And as Mr. Mould says, this is, this is an indication to the state that we are, we are concerned and adamant about what we're going to do with our stormwater and our pollutants. And please give us a hand. We deserve it. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spees. Ms. Mitchell?
I'll be really quick because I, because I wrote it down. For me, this is about doing what's right and meeting our responsibility as government and as a society to preserve our infrastructure and our natural resources. I don't want to leave my grounds and mounds of debt as is often cited when we talk about fees or taxes. I want to leave him a viable community that takes care of its citizens and their interests by making sure that our stormwater systems can handle a good rainfall without flooding his home or his business. I want to leave him a community that can once again take their children to the park and fish and actually be able to eat what they catch that day. I want to leave him a community where he can safely teach his children to swim in our local lakes and ponds like I did as a child. I learned to swim in Shoemaker Pond. He's learned to swim in a chlorinated pool at the YMCA. And that's not free either. It costs between forty-five and a hundred dollars for every five lessons, so pretty much per month. We're talking about twenty dollars a fee, twenty dollars a quarter fee for helping to clean that up. Comparatively, I think that's a pretty good bargain.
Twenty dollars a year?
A year, I'm sorry. Twenty dollars a year, I'm sorry. Even a quarter would be, it's still a bargain. Five dollars a quarter compared to the forty-five per month.
Be about a dollar sixty-seven a week.
Okay, thank you. Less than a cup of coffee to monetize that again. See, I wrote it down. I still messed it up. For me, the requirement to make these changes impacts Salisbury. We're required to reduce the pollutants in our runoff, our TMDLs, by the federal EPA. We can't escape that, nor should we try to in my opinion. But the consequences of failing to address and improve our runoff will be far more costly than the proposed twenty dollars per year per residence. And I just have to say, if not who, if not us, then who? If not now, then when? We've heard that many times before. But if we don't repair and care for our infrastructure now, we are in fact leaving our children mounds of debt via crumbling pipes and vanishing farming and waterman industries that will be much harder and much more costly to regain than to maintain.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
I would like to.
Mr. Spees?
Ms. Mitchell, if this is not a twenty dollar per resident, this is a twenty dollar per property, per residential property.
The residential property cost is that. The commercial fee will be different.
Because I don't want a whole family thinking they're going to pay, oh.
No, you're correct. You're correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry. We did start our outreach to the community last week at the mayor's neighborhood roundtable. Amanda was there, our partners at CBF were there with us. We have a whole nother eight or nine months before a final. We'll be doing this outreach to educate people. We have in the past, of course, done rain barrels with farmers and planners and CBF. And we are continuing to do that, working with the trash you all also approve every, every budget time. Another, another, I forget how much, but these, the catch basins that go inside our storm, our inlets to make sure that we're catching the trash as it goes. So this is, the environmental task force policy was something that was given to me when I became mayor. And we have done an incredible amount of those things on that list. And to thank Mayor Tillman for her leadership, former Council Vice President Comages for his leadership in, in getting us these recommendations and going ahead and ranking them for us. And then to thank the staff, this is a, this is a tough one and we understand that this is a tough one. But as has always been our mantra here is that regardless of elections, the federal government is going to, is going to require us to do these things. When people talk about the flush tax, all I can tell you is that forty-four million of the original eighty-four million at the wastewater treatment plant was that flush tax that came back to us far more than we ever put into it. And it will be thirty-two million of the new sixty-four million dollar wastewater treatment plant, far more than we would ever put into it as, as citizens and property owners in our city. So I understand that this is, that this is tough and that the political winds maybe went the other way the other night. But the federal government is going to require us to do something with this. Let me also thank Dr. Stribling and all her work with the River Project throughout the years. We're going to commence talking about the quality of our water, coming up with a large discussion about the Paleo Channel that will start at the beginning of two thousand and fifteen. And again, to staff who have taken all of your questions, meeting after meeting, council after council at this point. This is, this is two councils worth and got them to a point where we know what this money's going to do. It is not going to grow the size of government at all. It is going to be with the expertise that we have to begin addressing Main Street, Mill Street, Germania Circle, Delaware Avenue, all of those things. So, Market Street, yes, we're doing that now with the help of DNR saving that parking lot as well. So again, a thank you to you all for this vote this evening and a thank you to staff and for the residents for being here to support this.
Well, I have a couple of things to say. You know, occurs to me that doing what's right isn't always popular. But judging by the emails and phone calls we've received over the last few days, this is both right and popular. I've received more messages on this than anything else we've discussed or voted on since my election. And all but three messages were in support. I want to take everyone back for a moment to two thousand and thirteen when the fee, fee structure and the ordinance was proposed. We had an ordinance that was just an authorization and a fee structure proposed by our consultants that included mostly funding new staff. And, you know, through the leadership of the Department of Public Works and the mayor and council, we've, I think, put a few more meat, a little more meat on the bones and got something that we can really be proud of. Unfortunately, we can't claim to lead too much. Oxford beat us, Centerville beat us, Berlin beat us. Towns across the state have beat us, cities that have had this infrastructure for a long time like us. They've also shown more fiscal responsibility than we have up to this point, but we're getting there. We're catching up. We're the first big ones on the eastern shore to do it. I'm more than willing to continue to show, you know, the community that we are interested in reducing fees and permits and permit fees as well as timelines, permit timelines. I want us to continue to work on that. But this is prudent fiscal responsibility. I also want to address the potential elimination of the stormwater law that was passed in the state. That mandated funding system for the ten largest counties, that has nothing to do with us. That has nothing to do with us. That has nothing to do with our community. That has nothing to do with the infrastructure that's been in our ground for a hundred and five years. It's got nothing to do with anything. And we have for our hundred and five years had infrastructure in the ground that we haven't paid to take care of. And we haven't taken care of it. We have physical and infrastructural imperative. We have infrastructure that's falling apart because we have failed to take care of it for a hundred and five years. Our current fiscal status, I think, shows that that imperative has arrived, that we need a stable, dedicated, and adequate fund versus what is currently an unpredictable, ratable, and subject to politics fund and subject to political priorities. And there's nothing wrong with having different priorities, but taking care of your infrastructure should be number one or right up there. I looked around at other places and, you know, Maryland is in no way unique except for that we have this new mandate for those ten counties. That's unique. That's different. But in every one of the fifty states, there are municipal stormwater utilities. There are seven hundred of them nationwide. Most of them were put in place in the seventies. Ours is not new. There are fifty-four percent of those have created standalone agencies. Ours is in the minority. Thirty-three percent are within the Departments of Public Works, so we're in the minority there. Twenty percent of them sit on the tax bill, ten percent on standalone bills, seventy percent with other bills like water and sewer. Nearly every single coastal state has a majority of their municipalities with them. Maryland is an exception there. And the primary reason behind them was flood control and NPDES permits. The average annual cost is forty-two dollars a household. We're proposing twenty. I realized that what was recommended to us was forty. That's something that we're going to have to grapple with and deal with. And, you know, there may be a call from the public to step up, step it up in the future. But, you know, I think we all feel that starting with a very modest fee is the, the best approach. Eighty percent of those programs use impervious surface to calculate, and that's what we're using, impervious surface, to calculate the fee. Again, most of those were created in the seventies. Zero point zero zero nine per six percent of those fees were overturned by courts. That's one. One, ever, was overturned by the courts of municipal stormwater fees. Single one. If we look at our competition, and I look at Frederick, Maryland as our competition. If we look at our competition, a place that has successfully revitalized their downtown, they stalled when they failed to address flooding in the seventies. They got a lot of federal and state dollars in the last ten years and they've revitalized. And all of that on the basis of addressing flooding. And it makes the case that I think we need to really seriously address flooding in our west side and downtown with the, as one of the early, or some of the early capital projects for this fee. I can't any longer look across the table and I know none of us want to and none of us can at downtown business owners or residents of the west side and say, oh, there's nothing we can do. You bought a house in the low ground. You know, you've decided to invest in our city in the low ground. Well, we're not going to do that anymore. And today I heard from business owners on Main Street, Baptist Street, Calvert Street, and Poplar Hill Street in the downtown area requesting that we do something about it. requesting that we do something about it. And I know the administration has sat down with many of those business owners. The business community has spoken. I realize that also the chamber president stood right there and said, you must do this, it's an imperative. And we heard today that the chamber requests that this be tabled. I don't understand that at all. But I assume that's pressure from, you know, some individuals. But it's impossible. The people on the high ground have, who have stood opposed, you know, they don't face the same challenges, the same issues that those on the low ground face. I think this is a responsible approach, even if it's a hundred and five years late. And just a quick thought on fees. There's a recent development on South Division Street that came to me and showed me all of their, the fees that they were being charged, that they had to pay through the development process, and they weren't complaining. They're saying, just so you know, these are how many checks we have to write. This is what it's like, city, county, state, et cetera. Just, just the city fees, it was five hundred thousand dollars. Now, this is a substantial little development, but not, not a major project. Five hundred thousand dollars in fees. This is, this would be, by the calculations that I think if I understand this correctly, a hundred and forty dollars a year. I think there's so much more that we can do to reduce fees and to make the process easier for businesses who want to develop and want to grow Salisbury and grow Wycomco County's economy. And this is not the place to take a stand against fees. This is not it, this is not it. Because at the end of the day, when we don't have fees that explicitly pay for a utility, a use, an action, a false alarm violation, something like that, then it ends up costing us more property taxes. That's the only other way, that's the alternative. So this opens the door to a conversation long-term about a reduction in property taxes because we're adequately funding, adequately funding with a specific utility fee, the utility that we've had in the ground for a hundred and five years. For those reasons and many, 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 many more that lead to a revitalized Salisbury, I support this ordinance. I want to thank you, Mike and Amanda, for all the work that you and your staff put into this. I want to thank the citizens who have voiced their thoughts on this one way or the other. I want to thank Mr. Drew for his questions that helped us shape the ordinance and the changes earlier on in this process. Really appreciate that. And I want to thank the mayor and city administrator for all the work that you two have put into this. I encourage us to make infrastructure improvements as early as possible in Germania Circle area, Market Street area downtown, because I'm telling you, that's, that's where the, the water, you know. The water meets the road. That's, I mean, there's things that we can do immediately, and, and this is the way to do it. And I encourage all of us to get on public education right away. I know we've got a plan for that, but that's really important. So unless there's nothing else, I'll call the question. All those in favor of ordinance two-three-zero-six, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the award of bids. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second? Ms. Miller?
Good evening, counsel. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have one award a bid and two declaration of surplus this evening. The first award of bid is for RFP oh-two-dash-one-five, the engineering construction services for Parkside High School Regional Lift Station and Mill Street Pump Station improvements. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Public Works Department to solicit bids for RFP oh-two-dash-one-five. The project includes both construction, administration, and inspection services for both locations. The procurement department followed standard bid practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the State of Maryland's website, E-Maryland Marketplace. A total of six vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of Tuesday, September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, at two-thirty P.M. A six-person evaluation committee of Salisbury Public Works employees reviewed the vendor proposals and ranked each proposer on a scale of zero to four according to the evaluation criteria established in the RFP. George Miles and Burr LLC was determined by the evaluation committee to have presented the best proposal due to their clear understanding of the work required and staff experience. There are sufficient funds in the noted account to cover this purchase. The procurement department requests council's approval to award RFP oh-two-dash-one-five to George Miles and Burr in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
It's not been my experience that there's, and that's only eighteen months of experience, that there's been this much variation in what we're seeing here for the inspections, inspection fees, and even the construction administration fees when we look at one of the bidders. Could you shed some light? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
When I looked at the fees, construction administration in particular jumped out. You can see that there were three firms where they were almost identical. Recently, we revamped our RFP process for construction administration and inspection. In the past, the city had taken on the lead role for that, and our consultants were doing minor tasks. With the amount of projects we're bidding right now, including knowing that the treatment plant will be bid in the next few months, we've asked our consultants to take the lead role in construction administration, and, and we're there for support. So it is a larger scope. So the one price that looked small, you know, low, out of range, I feel like was almost bidding on an older scope, which they all got the same RFP, but that's, that's in line with what we used to see.
Okay.
The other prices were, like I said, there's three right in the same range, that was a good number, and then we got a couple that were very much on the high end for these projects, which these two pump stations are relatively straightforward. These are not quite as challenging as the ones that you saw recently, north side and south side pump station. Of course, they're all very critical, but these are a little bit easier. And the inspection rates, we pretty much ask in the RFP for a specific timeframe. So all these companies are bidding on the same amount of hours. So you can almost just take that down to a dollar per hour rate and look at the varying rates of the construction inspector. So we did get a price that was well within our budget that we, we did think was fair and reasonable.
Okay. Ms. Spies?
While we have you at the lectern, if you could just take thirty seconds to explain what the pump station does, why it's important, and if you know the numbers, how many people it serves.
Sure. Our, our sanitary sewer system is gravity sewer, which means that the pipes flow downhill. And you can only get so deep in the ground. So at some point, when you get deep enough, you have to have a pumping station. So then the sewage is then pumped up through a forced main to a higher point in the gravity sewer system, and then it flows downhill again from there. So we have fifty pumping stations in the City of Salisbury, which is significant. The Parkside Pumping Station serves a very large sewer shed which extends out to the east side of town. So actually, the Philip Morris Drive Pump Station pumps into it, and some of the other ones beyond that. So I don't have the number off the top of my head on exactly how many units that serves, but it's an extremely large sewer shed. And Parkside in particular is, is small. The capacity of Philip Morris, which is just upstream, is larger. So it's been on our radar for some time to need an upgrade because it, the capacity upstream exceeds that pump station capacity. The Mill Street Pump Station is located right here in downtown on Mill Street, and it seems, it sees significant infiltration and inflow during storms. So that's a critical station where we're adding a generator and new electrical controls to help make sure that, that we're pumping accurately and adequately when it's raining.
So if we all lived on a hill, we wouldn't need pump stations.
Correct.
But we don't.
If the treatment plant was at the bottom of the hill, we live on the top.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Miller?
The next item is a declaration of surplus for a Simline hot box. The Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from Salisbury Public Works to declare a surplus, the Simline hot box that was purchased in January two thousand nine. The equipment failed in two thousand ten and was repaired, but again, in two thousand thirteen, it experienced the same part failure. The machine is non-functional and unable to be repaired. A copy of the department memo is attached for further information. The procurement division requests council's approval to declare the noted item surplus and to allow the City of Salisbury Public Works Department to dispose of the hot patch machine.
Questions?
The last item this evening is a declaration of surplus for the Salisbury Police Department. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare the following item surplus. It's a Sentry fire safe. The model and serial number are noted. Upon declaration of surplus as approved by city council, the safe will be used to store SPD weapons. A copy of the departmental memo follows in your packet as well.
Do they have a new safe or something?
Do they have a new safe?
Yeah.
This will be used for them.
No, no, I'm saying, does internal services have a new safe? Procurement?
Do we have a new safe? No, we're, we're not.
Oh, it was SPD, got it, got it.
Yeah, well, sorry. I think it was a, yeah.
For some reason, I was thinking that it came from you and it's going to SPD.
No, we don't need one.
I would like to ask a question, but I want to go back to the previous item. This is the hot box, and perhaps Public Works could give me an idea. We had a, we bought this puppy in two thousand nine for twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. A year later, under warranty, the tongue broke off of it, which is a ramp or a diverting device of some sort. Okay. And then again, it broke off in two thousand thirteen, and I was unreparable at that point. Have there been design improvements over this? Are we buying from the same vendor?
Once bitten twice shy.
Well, if we get around to asking for another one, I doubt we will.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
That's, that's everything.
Ms. Spies, did you have anything else on the last item or no?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right. Okay. All those in favor of the award of bids as, as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Okay. Next item on our agenda is resolution number, thank you, Ms. Miller, resolution number two-four-six-four. This is the agreement between the City Salisbury Fire Company Number Two and Morris Family for the new fire station property. Invite Mr. Stevenson, you, resolution two-four-six-four.
Actually, Mr. Tillman's going to.
Oh, Mr. Tillman's going to give us the, the updates and the changes first? Okay. All right, first, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Tillman?
Thank you. The resolution appears in your packet, is the one that was discussed during the negotiations at the last closed session. We've been waiting for some time to hear from the lawyers and tax advisors of the Morris family as to how this exchange of property was to be structured initially. It was thought it was going to be a like-kind exchange, and that's the way it's worded in your contract. Late Wednesday afternoon, we received an email from their lawyer with some proposed changes. I had an opportunity to look at them Thursday afternoon after the packet went out. And previously, we had discussed the fact that what tax option they picked really made no difference to the city at all. But in addition, what occurred was that they decided to do this as a charitable contribution to the city, and as part of that, their lawyer advised them to get the city to pay for the appraisals. When I discovered this, I contacted the chief, and he contacted station number two to see if station number two would agree to pay for the cost of those appraisals. And I've since learned that the chief does have money in his budget to do that. Fire station number two had felt that that was a fair exchange because the Morris's, in addition to restructuring this as a charitable contribution, also agreed to give up the property where we were going to give them an easement behind the thing. So the city is now receiving that property as an additional contribution from the Morris family, and I'm sure the value of that would exceed whatever other obligation we have. So that's pretty much the way it is. The only other addition to that, and I have been on the phone today and on Friday trying to, you know, get everything clarified. But the, the fire station number two's lawyers were doing the title work for this transaction, and at, at no time during that did it, did someone uncover, apparently, the Morris's said that the city was given an easement for a parking lot. And so next door to the existing fire station, and it's a paved area that apparently we've had access to for some time, I have not seen that title work yet. But as part of the agreement, the city would not only convey the existing fire station after it was destroyed, but they would also convey their easement to use that parking area.
Which parcel was the parcel in question that's being transferred to the city from the Morris family? Is that four-nine-six?
There's a number of parcels.
Which was the parcel that was not included before that is now?
Parcel, I believe it was four, was they were retaining a portion of that property as well as an easement over the other properties to get to it.
Parcel four?
I believe that was it.
Or the one in the back?
Or was it a map would be helpful.
Yeah, I.
It's the one that's in the back along the fence line, correct?
Yeah, I, I just want to make.
Originally asked, if you go back to the fence line to the property line, they'd asked for an easement to be able to have access along, along the property line in the back.
Right. I'm, I'm familiar with the request. I just wanted to make sure, because, because there were changes last minute, I want to make sure I'm tracking where those changes were. So, so is this Morrison Morris Property four? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, a portion of Morrison Morris Property four, which was previously referred to. Yes. So they, they were going to retain a portion of, of Property four and a right-of-way to access that property. Now, the entire Property four will be conveyed to the city.
Now, but in the agreement, for example, under section three, covenants of the city, the references are a bit different. There are the parcel numbers, and there's, I don't see Morrison Morris Property numbers. You know, there's references to parcel four-nine-six, parcel fourteen oh-nine, fourteen-ten, fourteen-eleven, fourteen-eighteen, fourteen-fifteen. And I don't see where there's Morrison Morris part, property number one, two, three, four, and five.
Is that identified on the plat?
I don't have the copy of that in my possession this evening.
So is this it in number three where it says concurrently, the city shall also, this is under covenants of the city, sub-paragraph three, where it says concurrently, second sentence, concurrently, the city shall also obtain an appraisal of parcels, and then it lists those numbers that I just read off, currently owned by Morrison Morris LTD partnership. The city shall accept a charitable donation of the difference in appraised value between city parcel four-nine-six and the Morrison Morris Properties.
Right. You, assuming that we were going to get, they were going to reserve the right-of-way, it was going to be shown on exhibit J as, as to which parcel. In other words, I think it was the parcel number four identified on that plat. That plat is no longer relevant because there is no right-of-way anymore.
I just want to make sure I understand, because I don't think I do.
I think the chief.
Okay. What, what this, my understanding of what is being presented and the changes that were not included before but have been included now is that the piece of property, what are we calling it, that, that was going to remain in the ownership of the Morrison Morris Partnership. Portion of it.
Right.
Was going to remain in, under their ownership. They, we were going to have an easement, correct?
No, they were, they were. They were going to grant them.
We were going to grant them an easement, so we were going to own it no matter what.
It was landlocked property, which we were going to own the majority of that parcel, but a piece of it would, would remain with the Morris family. Then there would be an easement. But none of that is going to happen now. That's what's hap, that's the change.
Okay, so, so help me understand the purpose of this sentence, then. The city shall accept a charitable, charitable donation of the difference in appraised value between city parcel four-nine-six and the Morrison Morris Properties.
Right. The parcel number four-nine-six is basically the existing fire station. And we, the city will be, when the current fire station is completed, the city will be conveying that parcel to the Morris family.
Right.
And, but the Morris's on the other side of the road are conveying a number of parcels to the city. And so it would basically just be an offset based on the values after the appraisal.
Okay, so there may be a, there may be a change of hand, cash.
Not cash. It would be a charitable contribution to the city.
It will be, it will be considered a charitable contribution is what that means.
And everyone, everyone anticipates that their properties will be worth more than ours.
It will be, it will be considered a charitable contribution. Got it.
For the difference.
And the amount of that charitable contribution will be?
Determined by the appraisal.
Determined by the appraisals that have not yet been done.
When will that come to us?
It won't, because we're agreeing to it right here. We're letting them complete the transaction via this.
We, we in fact, I mean, under the contract, we're going, going to pick the appraiser. So I don't think anyone would, in other words, the city is going to pick an appraiser that the city believes will do a fair and adequate job in, you know, appraising these properties. The Morrises didn't even ask to pick their own appraiser. So, and they're willing to accept the difference in the values as established by the city's appraisals.
Yeah, I, I recognize the, the sense of urgency here, but I do want to make sure that Ms. Mitchell, your concerns are getting addressed in terms of the changes that happened late in the day.
Why don't you let me tell you exactly what those changes are, because I have them.
If you can go, yeah, if you can go line by line, that would be better.
Yeah. What, if, if you look.
Are you starting with the agreement or the ordinance, or the resolution?
I am beginning the resolution. Let's start with the resolution, if you want to start there, because that's, that's simple.
That's fine.
The resolution on the first page was nothing but formatting. Previously, the paragraph that begins on line, let's see, let me look at your copy, where it says, whereas Salisbury Fire Company Number Two owns the following real property. All we did, and what you have before you today, is create a paragraph there so that you could see that more clearly. I didn't want the first property to be listed right after the colon. It just sets it out. No, no verbiage was changed there whatsoever.
Okay.
Also, I thought it was more clear to do the same thing when it listed the Morris and Morris Limited Partnership properties.
Twenty-seven.
All we did was make, begin a new paragraph where it starts line 29 on the version that you were provided tonight. Again, just so you would be able to read it more clearly and see that that was in fact an additional parcel property. The, let me see. I think I did it on my version in here, so I need to turn to it. All right. And then the other, the only other change would be beginning what was in the packet under line 61. It had the language in there that, that reserving unto itself, whereas Morrison Morris was going to reserve the right-of-way on the portion of Property Four. That language struck. So the current version reads, whereas Morrison Morris Limited Partnership covenants and agrees to convey all of its right title and interest to the Morris and Morris properties unto the city. So that the, that's in the resolution. So that's the only real change in verbiage at all from the resolution that you received to the resolution that was provided this evening.
And there's the reference on lines 74 to 76 about the agreement and it being attached as exhibit A. I don't think that was added to.
Right. We, we, I just added the fact, and, and the reason I did that and set in their own a form to be acceptable to the city solicitor is because of this issue of the 85 by 85-foot parking space. I just want to make sure if we need to make some minor change in the contract to cover that. I believe what's in there now does cover it, but since the title attorney was unavailable to speak, I couldn't speak to him today.
Okay. And, and can you, can you give us a sense of the changes to the agreement itself where they are?
That one, I think I can do a little better, because I've got that right here in front of me. The first change in the agreement, if you look at the, the second page where it says, whereas Morrison Morris covenants and agrees to convey all its right title and interest unto the Morris and Morris properties unto the city, we just eliminated reserving unto itself the right-of-way again, just like you saw in the resolution.
Where are we?
Page two.
Right. First, where are we?
Bottom of the page.
Second, where are we?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, part, part of the problem we had getting you a revised copy this afternoon was the lawyer for Morrison Morris did not provide us with an electronic copy that we could amend until this afternoon. So as soon as we got that electronic copy, we made the changes and shipped them out. The, the next change would be on the third page. There's an addition of a third paragraph and a fourth paragraph, and I'm not sure on your, they, they weren't previously on your copies. So that would be under Roman numeral three. You have A, paragraphs one and two, and we have added three and four. The three and four were the paragraphs added by the Morris's attorney to cover the, the charitable contribution.
Okay.
And then paragraph number four was the paragraph that he added to make reference to the 85 by 80-foot, 85-foot parking lot, which the city is giving up any right to at the same time that we convey the fire station back to the Morris family. And when I say fire station, at that time, there will be no fire station. The agreement is that that building will be demolished, and it will be an empty lot.
I'm sorry, could you tell me that last one again?
Hmm?
The one you just?
Paragraph four. Paragraph four, yeah. Paragraph, the addition of paragraph four is simply a, a reference to the 85 by 85-foot parking easement that allegedly was given to the city years ago and would just be, we would just release the Morrises from that easement at the same time that we convey the, the adjacent property to them.
Okay.
The next change is under Roman numeral five, and the, the only subtraction there is again, the reference under subsection A, reserving unto itself an easement across the Morris and Morris property. That language is removed from the agreement.
Okay.
And then covenants of all parties, the references to the tax-free exchange are eliminated, Roman numeral four. And I think that's pretty much it. That's it. So, but in substance, the, the changes all had to do with giving up that asset and then making this a charitable contribution instead of a tax-free exchange.
Okay.
And I guess the only substantive thing would be that the city would be responsible for the appraisals, but my understanding is the money is available according to the chief. And if you have any questions about that, I would defer to him.
Are there questions for Chief Poppis?
No.
Ms. Mitchell?
No.
Well, now I was asking bigger picture. Are you satisfied, although we got it last minute?
Almost.
Okay. Ms. Spies, are you satisfied?
Any fears that I had are assuaged by the fact that we're having that assessment done by our, our own people. Thank you.
Okay.
We've had property assessments done before, and they were, let's find a word for that. Weird. Thank you.
Even when it does arise that we have to do these last-minute, red-line versions are much more helpful. Clean version's great, but it clearly helps to have the red-line version.
Yeah, that, that would have made it easier tonight, for sure.
If, if I had gotten the electronic version sooner, I, I would have gotten that to you. This was put together at the last minute just so that you would have it. I apologize for that.
And, and what it could mean in the future is, you know, that we end up in a situation where we have to postpone the decision in, you know, a time-sensitive matter like this that may not, that may be problematic in the future. So I know if everyone can do everything they can to ensure that we get these things in a timely fashion, we'd appreciate it. Any other questions, comments from counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 2464, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. I have no other requests for public comment. Hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Yeah, that's next. That's next. So I hope everyone enjoys their Thanksgiving. And with that, we're adjourned. Have a great night.